Ms. Demme?
Present.
Mr. Carubis?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
...... to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, July seventeenth. We've seen a lot of each other. We need a little break. I have five board salutes today. Mr. Rising?
Twenty twenty-three Student Council School of Excellence Award. The Board salutes Young Elementary for recently receiving the twenty twenty-three American Student Council Association Student Council of Excellence Award. They were selected based on their submission of projects in the areas of community service, student development, citizenship, and school spirit that were completed during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Councils were also required to submit letters of recommendation from their school principal and student council president. I believe they were the only district in Illinois to receive that award. Congratulations to Nancy Young Elementary for receiving that recognition.
Ms. Dumbing?
Matea Valley Junior earns perfect score on the Microsoft Excel Certification Exam. The Board salutes Matea Valley Junior Eugene Vincent for achieving a perfect score on his Microsoft Excel Certification Exam, and as a result was named the Illinois Champion. In addition to this achievement, he has been invited to compete in the twenty twenty-three Microsoft Office Specialist United States National Championship in Orlando, Florida, where he will represent Matea Valley and the state of Illinois. Congratulations Eugene.
Ms. Jane?
Matea Valley Junior achieves Rank of Eagle Scout. The Board salutes Matea Valley Junior Josh Birdsley for achieving the Rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in scouting. Josh's Eagle Scout Service Project involved building and installing a McCarty Elementary School Little Library. Congratulations to Josh on achieving the prestigious Rank of Eagle Scout.
Ms. Gents?
Frye Elementary Student wins first place in Stock Market Game. The Board salutes Frye Elementary fifth grade student Lucas Lannan, who placed first in Illinois in the Stock Market Game, an online simulation of the global capital markets that engages students grades four through twelve in the world of economics, investing, and personal finance. Congratulations Lucas.
And Ms. Fosdick?
SIFMA Foundation Awards District two oh four student. The Board salutes White Eagle Elementary fourth grade student Aparna Sarkar, who placed first in Illinois and third nationally in the Securities Industry and Financial Markets Association Foundation Invest Right Competition. Aparna competed among thousands of students around the country to write the best essay about long-term investing in the capital markets. The SIFMA Foundation is dedicated to fostering knowledge and understanding of the financial markets for individuals of all backgrounds. Congratulations Aparna on a job well done.
So let's do applause for all of those great achievements. All right, it is now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and our school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, we ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the Board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are coming or being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have two speakers tonight. The first one is Arnav Godambe. Welcome.
Good evening.
Oh, let's see.
Good evening. My name is Arnav Godambe, and I'm a proud pioneer at Gregory Middle School. I am bringing awareness to acquiring more outdoor classrooms in our district. These natural learning environments create a unique atmosphere that cannot be replicated in the traditional classroom setting. Outdoor classrooms have been proven to reduce stress, promote a better mental health, and increase student performance. A study by Harvard University conducted that outdoor classrooms are a flexible alternative to the standardized classroom. There is a study discovered that no child got sick when launching outdoor classrooms across several schools. Health benefits such as an exposure to sunlight can lead to higher levels of vitamin D intake. Students can feel energized and have higher levels of focus and retention in outdoor classrooms. Students remain attentive by retaining things, creating a stronger memory, and forcing students to apply the curriculum to real-world problems and situations. In addition, it has been proven that outdoor classrooms reduce stress levels, which makes students happier and more eager to learn. Lower stress levels contribute to better sleep by balancing the time spent looking at a screen. Implementing outdoor classrooms increases creativity by encouraging problem-solving skills to encourage critical thinking, reasoning, and innovation skills. In the mundane classroom setting, students struggle with collaboration, fostering teamwork, and communication. Outdoor classrooms combat these problems. We can hear a diverse array of thoughts and increase student performance by implementing outdoor classrooms. In addition to an overall better lifestyle, some schools do not have the privilege of acquiring an outdoor classroom, which is an equity issue. Outdoor classrooms in our district are typically funded by the PTA. However, not all PTAs have the sufficient funding to construct an outdoor classroom. We urge you to consider investing in outdoor classrooms for every school in our district to ensure equal access to their benefits. That said, we'd like you to look beyond our classroom walls to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. Outdoor classrooms have been proven to reduce stress, promote better mental and physical health, increase focus, retention, creativity, collaboration, and more. Outdoor classrooms are a worthwhile investment for our district as they increase academic performance and student growth. It is a pleasure speaking before you all, and I wish you success in the upcoming school year. As always, go pioneers.
Thank you. We wish you success too. All right, our second speaker is Alicia Smith. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Alicia Smith. I'm an alumni of
Gregory Middle School.
And Wabonzi Valley High School. I live in the Gombert neighborhood. My niece and nephew attend Gombert School, and I taught at Kendall Elementary School and at Georgetown School. I just completed my sixth year of teaching in two oh three. Indian Prairie School District two oh four states that they have a commitment to equity and educational excellence, yet not all schools are included in this commitment. Four two oh four schools fall below the state average in state testing: Fisher, Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. The teachers, students, and families are striving for educational excellence, but the administration and school board are not committed to equity for those schools. When the district designed the boundaries of Gombert, Longwood, and McCarty, it gave them a low-income, free-and-reduced-lunch population that is more than doubled the district average of eighteen percent. Georgetown's low-income, free-and-reduced-lunch population is more than tripled the district average of eighteen percent. Then the district created even more inequity by having three of those schools feed into Fisher Middle School. A student attending either Georgetown or McCarty from kindergarten through fifth grade and then attending Fisher will have attended a school for nine years that has not met the state average in testing. School districts do not have to create inequitable schools that cannot meet the state testing averages. Naperville two oh three has a similar low-income, free-and-reduced-lunch population to Indian Prairie School District two oh four. Naperville two oh three's low-income, free-and-reduced-lunch average is fifteen percent, while two oh four's is eighteen percent. Unlike two oh four, two oh three does not have a single school with a low-income average that is more than double the district average. As a result, every single school in two oh three is well above the state average in state testing. Two oh four's commitment to equity and educational excellence should be for all of its schools. The administration and school board should not be designing schools with inequitable obstacles for teachers, students, and families to overcome. We deserve to be included in the district's educational excellence. We want equitable schools for Fisher, Georgetown, Gombert, Longwood, and McCarty. And I would like to end this with quotes from Poverty by America by Matthew Desmond. "Do we not colonize the future when we reserve spaces there for our children while denying other children a fair shot? By deconcentrating poverty in schools and communities, integration blunts its sting. Simply moving poor families to high-opportunity neighborhoods without doing anything to increase their incomes improves their lives tremendously. America has backslid since Brown, so much so that our children's schools today are less economically diverse
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
than their grandparents' schools."
Thank you very much. We now move to our Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We will start with the Superintendent Report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. I'm actually going to cede part of my time to Dr. Howard because we are going to celebrate and recognize some students, and then after that is done, I'll go back to my comments. Dr. Howard?
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Good evening, Board of Education. On April tenth, the Student Advisory Board presented a proposal that included the addition of a student committee at each school intended to enhance the work and effectiveness of the Student Advisory Board, which I'll refer to as the SAB going forward. Thank you for your consideration and approval of this new structure. The committee members will serve as a support to the three executive SAB members who will attend all of the board meetings. The committee members will serve as liaisons between the SAB and the various student organizations, gather feedback, work with the general student body, and organize events and activities to support the work of the SAB. It is my pleasure to report that the selection process has concluded, and it is my honor to present our new members. And to put these students in perspective, there were over ninety-four students across the three high schools who were nominated for the committee. Sixty-seven of those students decided to put in an application, and of that sixty-seven, these fifteen students were selected after an interview process that was pretty rigorous and conducted solely by the current members of the SAB. So tonight, let's recognize them, so please stand as your name is called. Representing Matea Valley, we have Anaya Leek, Siri Nayakanti, Ariana Walton, and not present is Sarayu Madala. Please give Matea Valley's reps a hand. And representing Niqua Valley, we have Soheil Fong, Ali Thai, and not here tonight is Isabel Harper, Alicia Sethi, and Ambi Chevade. Thank you very much. And last but not least, the original Valley, we have representing Wabonzi, River Daniel, Jasmine Hudamaker, Dia Menon, Ryan Mitchell, and Shriya Nivnitha. And not present is Adam Abatulip. Thank you, and welcome, students. We're happy to have you. We have three juniors who served the SAB this past school year. Their work has been impactful, and we are excited to have their continued voice at the board level next school year as executive members. So when your name is called, please come forward to be recognized for your service, and I'm going to ask if a couple of the board members will come to shake their hands. So representing Wabonzi Valley, we have Eric Prakash. Represent- oh, representing Matea Valley, Shloka Shakar. And representing Niqua Valley, Victoria Vassal. Okay. Next, we want to honor the three graduated seniors who served on the SAB this past school year. These seniors had to balance the work and demands of this advisory with all of the activities and demands of being a senior here in our district. So in honor of their service, the Board and district are presenting them with a certificate, a planner to help them get organized and set goals for their post-secondary pursuits, and an Amazon gift card to offset some of the costs of what comes next. So when your name is called, and it's not going to offset it by much, don't get excited. Not at all. So please come forward. From Niqua Valley, we have Lucas Lombana Arias. Representing Matea Valley, we had Taylor Pastis Bell. And I want to give special recognition to one of the graduates who served this past year. Her leadership was instrumental in moving the work of the SAB forward. She showed initiative in many areas and led the group in the development of the proposal and through the selection process. She will be missed, but the impact of her work will be felt for years to come. Please come forward, Kristin Shereyes, representing Wabonzi. Kristin is also receiving the Outstanding Service Award. So once again, let's give all of our SAB members a round of applause. We look forward to their service next school year. Thank you.
Dr. Howard, thank you so much, and I want to thank you for what you've done with our student members of the Board. We wouldn't be where we are without you. And also to the board members who have been participating in this, Ms. Fosdick and Mr. Carubis, thank you so much in what we're doing. Thank you. And now to my comments. I have to start my comments tonight with some sad news. John Nikas, a teacher at Still Middle School, passed away on Monday, on Friday morning. Mr. Nikas had been a teacher for more than eight years and also worked as a coach at both Still and Wabonzi Valley. He leaves behind his wife and two children. I ask that we take a moment of silence and remember- remembrance of Mr. Nikas. Thank you. On Memorial Sunday, we graduated nearly twenty-one hundred students at our three high schools during their graduation ceremonies. Each event was completed beautifully. Each school should be commended for their events. Planning and executing these events can be very difficult, however, the high schools seem to do them with ease and aplomb. I know, though, that behind the scenes and leading right up to the event, a lot is happening that the general public has no idea. I applaud the planners at the three high schools, Ms. Montrine Johnson at Wabonzi Valley, Mr. Daniel DeBrucker at Matea, that was his last one for him to organize. Next year, he'll be principal, and Ms. Sharon Roth at Niqua Valley. Friday was the last day for students, and today is the last day for teachers. The end of the school year is always a bittersweet, as we say goodbye to our students and staff, wishing them a wonderful summer. As I said to our graduates in graduation, this school year has been the most normal of our last four years. We are very proud of what we have been able to accomplish this school year with our schools working in collaboration with parents' groups to provide schools at levels similar to what it was before the pandemic. Our success this year was due to everyone working together. I have to thank our teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our administrators, our student support coordinators, our parents, our local businesses, our community for their continued support of our students. I celebrate our students for the hard work that they have done this year in learning and growing and developing. We will have summer school programs starting soon. Thanks to those who will be working for those programs, from our summer boost program to our STEM camp, students will be back soon for learning and excitement. Thank you all for a great year. Now, before I turn the meeting back to Mr. Donahue, Ms. Donahue, I will ask the Board of Ed to approve two appointments. One, Mr. Kevin Schnabel, who has been principal of McCarty, will now be the principal of Fisher Middle School. He expressed strong desire to be the new principal of Fisher Middle School. He is passionate about continuing to serve the children in the community in a new role. And I also would like the Board to approve Ms. Sharon Roth as Director, Office of Human Resources, replacing Ms. Carrie Beth Harry, who was promoted. Ms. Roth is coming to us from Niqua Valley, where she has been an assistant principal. She has worked as a dean of students in Glenbard West High School and was a special educating teacher at Wabonzi Valley High School, and both of whom are here today with their families, which we're happy to see. So I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Donahue.
All right, so I need a motion to approve Sharon Roth as Director of Human Resources as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Sharon Roth as Director of Human Resources as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Carubis?
Yeah.
And Mr. Rising?
Yes.
The motion passes. Congratulations. Sharon, would you like to tell us who you brought today?
I have my family, my mother and my father, retired educators, and I also have half of my Dean team from Valley.
All right, I now need a motion to approve Kevin Schnabel as the principal of Fisher Middle School as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve Kevin Schnabel as principal of Fisher Middle School as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Mr. Carubis?
Yeah.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Congratulations. Kevin, would you like to tell us who you brought?
Yeah, I got my stepmom Kathy here, who taught sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for thirty-five years, so she can help me with this transition. I got my beautiful wife, Dina. She's been a school soldier, working in the Spiegel School System for twenty-seven years. Got my buddy Eric, who is entering his senior year at Plainfield North High School, and our daughter Kara, who just finished her freshman year at Illinois State and studying to become an elementary school teacher.
Okay, sorry. Next, we move to our Consent Agenda items. I need a motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda Items F through V.
President Donahue, this is Captain Carubis. I ask to pull Consent Agenda Item V and vote on that separately, please.
Okay. Is that- do I have a second for that motion? Do I need a second for that? Yeah. Second to pull it and vote separately on that?
I second the motion
Okay.
to approve the agenda items with the pulling of
Which one is that?
V. Pulling of V.
So F through U.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have a second for approving Agenda Items F through U?
She just did.
Ms. Demme just
A second. Okay, that's right.
I just gave a second.
Okay, okay. All right, any discussion? All right, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubis?
For clarification, this is a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items F through U, currently?
Correct.
Yeah.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue?
Yes. The motion passes. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item V.
I'll second that motion to approve Consent Item V.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Mr. Nope, yeah, Mr. Carubis?
No.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
The Agenda Item passes. All right, Consent Agenda Item passes. All right, so next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve an increase in all categories of substitute teacher retiree compensation as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve an increase in all categories of substitute teacher and retiree compensation as presented.
I I did.
Okay, any discussion? I will be recusing myself because I am a substitute teacher. I will also recuse myself from this vote.
And just for clarification, well, I don't know if, we wanted to get clarification of the reason we're doing this. There was rationale given. If Dr. Tally just wants to briefly mention that?
Yes, this aligns us more closely with other districts and what we're paying or substitute pay.
Thanks.
All right. Michelle, will you please call the Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Carubas.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Gents.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right. I need a motion and a second to uphold the one-day suspension of the student identified in closed session and to approve the written decision to that effect.
I move that the Board of Education uphold the one-day suspension of the student identified in closed session and to approve the written decision to that effect.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carubas.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Demming.
Aye.
The motion passes. We will now have a presentation from Dr. Michael Purcell regarding Calculus and Advanced Placement Calculus Course Update, including resource proposal.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Tally. I swear, this is the last time I'll be here for a while. I appreciate your support for the things that we've been doing and, and the curriculum plan that the teachers and administrators have been working so hard on. The piece that I want to come and share with you tonight is for our Calculus and Advanced Placement Calculus classes. Actually, three different courses in our coursebook. We have two with Advanced Placement in the College Board. One is called Advanced Placement Calculus AB. Another is called Advanced Placement Calculus BC. And then we have a non-AP, a non-Collage Board Calculus class as well. I'll go through kind of what's the difference as we go through, but I just want to kind of lay that out as we get started. The, the, what we have for you is really with this, Calculus hasn't changed much, right? But, but really, we want to talk about how we've come together on some alignment on those things, the process that we took, and then to ask for you to vote at the next Board of Education meeting about potential resources to support their work and kind of why we came to recommend that. This follows under a handful of Board policies. Six forty, which is curriculum development. Six sixty, which is instruction. Typically, that's just about graduation requirements for a small number of our kids. This actually does meet their third year of math, these Calculus classes, believe it or not. Six two ten, instructional materials, which we'll talk about at the end, and very closely aligned to our strategic plan, strategy number one around student development. These, as I, as I mentioned earlier, this is really three separate courses. And we'll talk about how the resources will support each of those. The, the work here was done with, with our teachers. These are experts. These are folks who know a whole lot more about Calculus than, than the rest of the room, well, maybe besides these guys, combined. You know, and I want to start by thanking them. Christopher Moy, John Riddle, and Diane Hendricks from Matia Valley, James Fox, Tiffany Stock, and Joseph Kuss from Niqua Valley, A.J. Repolli, Jill Casey, and Nick Arons from La Bonzi Valley. And our department chairs, Mary Nash, Molly Owles, Jackie Palmquist, who kind of did this as one of her last acts before her retirement, and her successor, Colin Hayes, who's been actively involved as well. So a large number of teachers involved in really making sure this is something that's great for our kids. These are, there are learning standards, Illinois State learning standards in this area. So we certainly align to those for the College Board, Advanced Placement classes, really tied very closely to the suggested scope and sequence, because that's really what, what the college is aligned to. That's what the assessment aligns to. That's how they earn their credit, right? And we really just want to make sure that students are successful for whatever their next college-level course is, right? So typically, what that means is for our kids that are taking the Calculus, the non-Collage Board Calculus class, they'll be going in, taking either Calculus I, or if they're really kind of blowing it off the charts, they'll go in and take Calculus II as their first class. They'll have to go in and typically take a placement test. And so our job is to prepare them to place in as, and be as ready as they can be. For our, our AB class, those students complete and will earn credit if they do, perform well on the assessment in Calculus I, which is typically a five-credit English math class, right? And then for our kids that are taking BC, typically, they will earn for both Calculus I and Calculus II, which can be, depending on the university, up to 10 credits, which is a lot of math, right? So, so these, these students are coming in with a lot of math. We have a very high success rate, well, well above the national average on all of those assessments. The, I'll talk about the Calculus course first. It's a survey-level Calculus class, which feels a contradiction in terms, right? But for students that have completed pre-Calculus, you know, these students are definitely going towards a senior year. They want, they want a fourth year of math. But for whatever reason, they're just not ready or not kind of wanting to take on that college-level mathematics at this time. So sometimes that may be just to kind of balance their load and give them a little bit of mental health, right? Sometimes it was, hey, pre-Calculus is really hard for me, and I need to kind of slow down a little bit and make sure I got this really kind of tucked in before I head out of here. Now, whatever that reason is, we're here to meet them where they are, and this, this class really does that for our kids. The, this Calculus class, the other class, the other classes will have 10 units, and we'll talk about those in a minute. This one only has five. They're kind of larger and they go deeper. They really start even before that first unit of Limits and Continuity with a sort of a pre-unit. Kind of going back and make sure we got our algebra underneath us, going back and doing some of those pre-Calculus topics and making sure those are locked in. And then really getting into the two big topics of Calculus are differentiation and integration. And, and those are the things that they really kind of spend their time on. Our AP Calculus classes, like I said, that AB Calculus is aligned to Calculus I. Our BC students, upon successful completion of the exam, can earn credit for both Calculus I and Calculus II. As a disclaimer, every single college in America is different from each other. So that is a generalization and not a promise. So certainly investigate the schools that you, that, that students are looking to attend to see how these line up. For that class, the, the first eight units of these 10 are in, are in both classes. The BC class goes two more units at the end, parametric equations, polar coordinates, and vector value functions. I can very briefly describe what those were for you if you were interested. And then the, and then sequences and series, which come after that. So definitely some, some very higher-level math. These, these students are really getting into kind of, when they're done with this, are kind of moving into the kind of three-dimensional space and volume kinds of things that, that our kids are really ready for, which is a really, a great thing for our kids. So, so why I'm here is that we needed to, and we have been doing a really nice job with the College Board classes. We spent a good deal of time with the, the regular Calculus class to make sure we were in alignment. When there's, when there's a little less of an end target, it's a little easier to sort of differentiate and be just sort of meeting the needs of the kids in front of you. But it always is better to make sure that we are doing that in a way that's leveraging our assets across the district. It was time, along with Strategic Plan Priority One, to make sure that this was through the lens of achievement, equity, and student engagement. You know, we did, you know, look at all of those pieces, in particular, that student engagement part. And we'll talk about with the resources, you know, what students had to say. And then also, I was going to bring a prop of the Calculus book that we have now, but the ones, the first three that I picked up just kind of fell apart in my hand. So that's kind of why I'm here. And also, that it was adopted over 15 years ago. So it, there's no digital component to it. There's no immediate feedback. There's none of those pieces that we really value now, right? So, so all of those are kind of reasons why I'm here today, to kind of say that there's, we just need something new. This work began in the fall. Teams of representatives from each of the three large high schools, upon approval, we'll roll these out in August. The teams are ready to go. And then upon approval in July, if that is your wish, we could have those in teachers' and students' hands for the beginning of school. The resources that we are here to propose for the AP classes, the both classes will use the same book. That's very typical across these, is the Calculus for the AP Course by BFW Publishing. This is a partner that we work with in a lot of areas and have, they really kind of focus on the AP space. We have quite a few of the AP titles with them. The second, for the non-AP classes, called Brief Calculus and Applied Approach by, by a vendor, Sengage. Sengage is also in the National Geographic. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago with our biology. The, we did have a chance to get these in front of our kids, which was great. And their feedback was, a couple of things, a couple of themes, themes came out. One was they really liked the visuals and they really liked the organization of how it was presented. My favorite quote, and this was just one of the kids, it says, gosh, this would have been really helpful this year. So I was like, all right, cool, I think we're doing the right thing. So, so they, you know, it was good to get their feedback, great to get the teachers kind of all on board. This was absolutely a unanimous sentiment from, from that group. And really evaluating the three areas. One is instructional benefits based on achievement, equity, and engagement. The, the second is the digital integration, working with our technology team to make sure that the back office of that all works, that we can get it into, into kids' hands and the teachers' hands without any sort of fuss at the classroom level. And then the fiscal responsibility, to make sure that they were responsible better in terms of the products and services. So, so these both, check both of those boxes. The team really liked the integration of the physical resource, the digital resource, and how they worked with the College Board-developed materials and really how they tightly aligned the, how the BFW title really tightly aligned to the College Board's scope and sequence. We had, we had a couple of other titles that we really liked, and they did a lot of the same things, but they, the, there wasn't that alignment. And when you start looking at multiple platforms, when they're looking at the College Board-produced resources with AP Classroom and things like that, and now we're talking about like different units and numberings and all that kind of stuff, it just, it causes confusion. So what we want to do is make this as seamless for the kids as possible. We're talking about working in Unit Four. It's Unit Four everywhere, rather than it being Unit Four here, and Unit Two there, and Unit Three, you know. So that was a really big deal. The non-AP Calculus book really has an inviting style, a lot of supports. Dr. Howard, who was here a little bit ago, said, she, she's still here, you loved that one. That was the one you really liked, Nicole. So she came in, she's like, I love this one. So, so we got the Dr. Howard stamp of approval, so, so we're ready to go, I think. So both of these resources are on display here as we do with all of these things. The next regularly scheduled meeting is for July 17th. I, I plan to bring in a request for approval of both of those. If I can, just one moment before, I turn this over for questions that you guys might have. This is our last meeting with my friend, my boss, Doug Ikarius. Just want to take a minute for his leadership. All these things that you've seen from us wouldn't be possible without him sort of steering the ship. So just indulge me a moment to say thank you to Doug for all the work he's done.
Yeah, many thanks. All right, I'm just going to let it open for anyone that has any questions or comments about the Calculus changes.
Not a question, a comment? You had me at digital resources. It's about darn time. I'm just excited about that. So I'm sure the materials align the College Board. I don't have any concerns. But I'm glad that you also had students look at it and got the students' perspective. So thank you. And thanks, Doug, for going through a lot of this curriculum. And, you know, I know it's been a Herculean effort by, by the curriculum team, so thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I can't imagine what a book looks like after 15 years of, I mean, I did substitute in BC Calculus, but none of them had the book there, so.
Truth is, it's hard, they're hard to hand out anymore, because they're just, I mean, they're broken apart, yeah. So it was, it's, it's been time for a while. Yeah, so thank you for the support of this.
Yeah, and thank you very much to Doug. We're going to miss you also and for all of the different activities that you've had a heavy lift in in the district. So thank you. All right, I think we have no more questions.
Thank you very much.
Now, we will have a presentation from Dr. Nader Najjar regarding the Equity Plan.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Tally. I'd like to start before Doug escapes and tell him, and I'd like to also thank Doug because, being my first year in the district, the support that he gave me and, in reality, all of the cabinet and all of the district, but Doug specifically taking me under his wing and ensuring that I was empowered to be able to do the work that I need to do. So thank you to Doug Ikarius. So I'd like to present to you today the Equity Plan, the long-awaited Equity Plan. And this Equity Plan is part of our Strategic Plan, Priority One, Objective One. Objective One, which is to provide all students equitable experiences by ensuring their needs are known and met to increase performance and reduce disparities in student outcomes. And then the first item there under that was to complete the Equity Plan. And so that's what I'll be doing today, is presenting it. And we entitled it Equity in Action: A Strategic Plan Addendum for Intentional Progress. And so, and I believe it's the first type of Equity Plan that I know like this, because many districts either work off of a strategic plan or an Equity Plan, or, but, or they have both, but they don't really align. So I think that we have a strategic plan, and then we have an Equity Plan as an addendum that talks about how we operationalize it, is the first one that I know of, and another first for our district as far as equity is concerned. The presentation today will provide a comprehensive look at Indian Prairie's commitment to equity from the Board of Education's perspective to the purpose of our Equity Plan and its alignment with our Strategic Plan. We'll explore how the plan will turn our equity commitment into action, focusing on school improvement plans, capacity building, and continuous professional learning. Our Board President, Lori Donahue, in the plan extends a warm welcome to everyone. This Equity Plan, she speaks of as a testament to our longstanding commitment to equity and our dedication to ensure every student can reach their greatest potential. And then she goes on to invite the community to engage with us on this ongoing journey, eliminating disparities in educational opportunities and embracing our diversity. As we move to the next part of the presentation, we'll focus on Indian Prairie's unwavering commitment to equity. The Equity Plan functions as a roadmap that outlines how we'll turn our commitment to equity into concrete actions. It extends our Strategic Plan and explicitly details our commitment to high-impact, equity-focused practices, thus turning our aspirations into realities within our classrooms and communities. And then we have here the District Tool for Equity Belief Statement. And I want to just take a moment and talk about how important words are, right? As a belief statement, we had many schools where they're building equity leadership teams. They function from the Equity Belief Statement. They take it and they filter it, and all of their actions are based on it. So for example, one of the schools that I'll highlight just for a moment, looked at the wording where it talks about removing barriers. And all year, they worked on removing barriers for students. And one of the things they found was that many students didn't have access to audiobooks, the audiobooks that they needed. And so then they directed them, they didn't have enough licenses in the school, they directed them to the public library. Well, many of them didn't have library cards. So I said, okay, this is a barrier we have to remove, and this is based on our Equity Belief Statement as a district. They had a library card drive. They brought in all the local libraries from around the area, Aurora and Naperville, and 87 students that day received a library card for the first time. And that's in middle school, right? And that's extremely powerful. So I think that's just a testament to the power of words and the power of us standing behind our words as a district. This next slide here talks about how our Strategic Plan is woven within the Equity Belief Statement. We strive to ensure that our learning environments are engaging and challenging to support our staff's well-being, to engage with our community proactively, and to optimize our resources and operations in a transparent and inclusive manner. So this slide, I believe, is powerful because it shows how our strategic priorities and our Equity Belief Statement align with each other. And they're highlighted there by color, which I'm sure a graphic design artist would do better with. But I think it goes to show how each part of our Equity Belief Statement is directly aligned with our Strategic Plan priorities. So again, I think that the wonderful thing about that is that our, our educators and our leaders and administrators and our leaders and administrators are not working from different documents, and are not being steered in different ways by multiple initiatives and being fatigued by them, but instead can be laser-focused on what we believe is a district. Now, let's delve in how, uh, we plan to actualize our commitment to equity, and how we'll transform these principles into tangible actions. Here, on this slide, we illustrate how our operational flow, from our mission to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential, uh, translates into school improvement plans and the development of equity-focused capacity among our staff, students, parents, and communities. Professional learning is also an integral part of this work. So I'll come back to this slide throughout the presentation, just to remind us where we're at. So again, the purpose of the slide saying, "From our mission," was born the strategic plan and the Equity Belief Statement. They then had a child called the Equity Plan, and then the Equity Plan lays out these three strategies to be able to operationalize our equity within our strategic plan. In operationalizing our Equity Plan, a critical component is integrating high-leverage equity practices into school improvement plans. By doing so, each school can cater to its unique community needs, maintaining a strong focus on equity, and translating our strategic plan's objective into everyday practices. Right? So, it, when schools are able to integrate, um, things into their school improvement plan, that drives what happens throughout the entire year, right? And that's the difference between weaving in equity into everything we do versus, uh, you know, and I love to give professional development, versus Nader just showing up and giving a PD on a random day, and we call it Equity PD, right? So how are our school improvement plans, whether they're written around math, reading, SEL, belonging, or whatever they may be, how do they have equity components written within them, so that then the building equity leadership teams and the instructional leadership teams can work to make those things a reality? And so what we do here is provide our school leadership with, um, multiple action items that they can weave into their school improvement plans. So when we're looking at Priority One in our strategic plan around focusing on student development, we, um, go ahead and we suggest twelve different things that a school, and they, they don't have to be tied to these, but these are twelve research-based best practices to bring upon educational equity within, um, a building. And these practices are designed to build a teaching environment that respects and values the diverse backgrounds and experiences of our students. For example, there you'll see culturally responsive teaching, co-teaching models, and differentiated instruction are all strategies that adapt, uh, teaching methods to meet the students' unique needs and backgrounds, promoting inclusivity and improving student achievement. Peer tutoring and strengthening the professional learning communities encourage collaboration and shared learning among students and educators, fostering a sense of belonging and enhancing academic outcomes. We're looking to incorporate, uh, SEL, or social-emotional learning, across the curricula, a holistic approach to teaching that enriches academic outcomes and builds essential life skills. UDL, or Universal Design for Learning, restorative practices, and a strength-based approach are all strategies aimed at building a learning environment that is accessible, empathetic, and engaging for all students. Additionally, ensuring equity in grading practices and implementing poverty-sensitive policies and practices ensures that all students are assessed fairly and receive the necessary resources and supports to succeed. So again, these strategies that you'll see over the next, uh, three slides after this are pieces, action items, that can be plugged directly into a school's school improvement plan, um, that speak to our strategic priorities and our, um, leverages for equity within the building. Under Priority Two, investing in staff, we recognize the essential role of our staff in delivering high-quality equitable education. Strategies such as collaborative planning time and personalized professional development respect the diverse needs of our teachers, fostering a culture of shared responsibility and individual growth. Mental health supports for staff and trauma-informed practices prioritize the well-being of our staff, enabling them to bring their best selves to the classroom. We also aim to cultivate a positive and inclusive staff culture through restorative practices, safe spaces for dialogue, and affinity groups. These strategies encourage open communication and mutual respect among staff members. Leadership development opportunities and the opportunity for staff voice and input empower our teachers, fostering a sense of belonging and empowerment. Looking into Priority Three, we recognize the importance of community engagement in promoting equity. Our strategies aim to involve families and community members in our school's operations, from collaborative decision-making processes to community surveys and feedback mechanisms. Family literacy programs, parent guardian SEL workshops, and parent-family workshops on supporting learning at home aim to extend the learning environment beyond the school, reinforcing lessons learned in the classroom. Community reading programs, community tutoring, mentoring programs, and the use of community role models strengthen community involvement in our schools, fostering a shared responsibility for student success. Switching to Priority Four, we aim to create a learning environment that is adaptable, inclusive, and environmentally responsible. You'll notice the first one here, um, somebody might have mentioned earlier today, flexible learning spaces. It says, "Invest in flexible learning spaces that can adapt to different learning activities and needs promoting student engagement and success," and this is a research-based best practice. Sustainable practices in school operations and the utilization of community spaces for learning build an adaptable and responsible learning environment. Investment in teacher collaboration spaces, culturally responsive curriculum materials, and innovative technology integration are aimed at enhancing the quality of instruction and learning experiences. So now we come back to our directional map here, so from the mission to the strategic plan and the Equity Belief Statement, the Equity Plan, and then we move to the equity-focused capacity building. Our commitment to operationalizing equity involves systematically building the capacity of all stakeholders, including staff, students, parents, and community members. In an effort to raise the baseline for all and drive the strategic plan's equity objectives, we will cycle through three broad equity themes, each year focusing on a distinct facet of the theme. This cyclical, action-oriented approach guarantees that our sustained efforts to endorse equitable outcomes for all students remain comprehensive, strategic, and collaborative, echoing the essence of the strategic plan. This Venn diagram here, presented on this slide, illustrates the symbiotic relationship between equity-centered educators, equity partners, and equity-conscious students. This relationship underscores the importance of each party in maintaining and furthering our commitment to equity. The overlapping sections symbolize shared responsibilities and the collaborative nature of our approach. It also demonstrates the continuous capacity building for equity needed across, across all roles, to truly foster an equitable learning environment for all. So, when, when we talk about all of our stakeholders, we talk about our educators, our students, and our community. And first, we'll talk for just a moment about equity-centered educators. An equity-centered educator's role extends beyond teachers and administrators to include all staff members contributing to a student's educational experience. An equity-centered educator recognizes the importance of providing every student with an equitable and inclusive learning experience. They strive to create a safe, welcoming, and supportive environment for all students, while being mindful of everyone's unique needs and backgrounds. To do this, they examine what they teach, how they teach, and who they teach, amongst other factors, to ensure that their practices are aligned with the district's Equity Belief Statement. So, one of the things that we'll do in our cyclical approach in, uh, capacity building for educators, is we look at what we teach, and that'll be a focus for us this fall, hopefully. Um, equity-centered educators design and deliver curricula prioritizing diverse perspectives and promote, promoting critical thinking and reflection, fostering an authentic, inclusive, and empowering learning environment for all students. And so this part of our capacity building, um, also, we see this happening in the presentations that Dr. Purcell has given, um, the course, um, Development of the Human Geography Ninth Grade Course, where they took all of these things into consideration, and also how we are working with our, um, staff members to ensure that the instructional material, um, that we put in front of our students is authentic, inclusive, and empowering. Equity-centered educators also prioritize culturally responsive, research-based best practices. And equity-centered educators prioritize intentional relationship building with students, families, and the community, grounded in mutual respect, understanding, and shared Then when we talk about the capacity building for students, an equity-conscious student, we met some of them today, actively strives for educational equity for themselves and others, acknowledging that equity means ensuring equal access to opportunities and resources. They possess, they possess a strong sense of self-awareness that values and prioritizes equitable outcomes by advocating for themselves and their peers. An equity-conscious student contributes to a culture of inclusion, diversity, and belonging through their actions. And an equity-conscious student is constantly, um, looking and developing how they understand their diverse world, how they build strong and supportive relationships, and how they elevate their voices and their actions. And since we saw that today with the SAB, um, the definition we have there is that equity-conscious students are empowered to promote equity and justice by developing leadership skills, advocating for change, and addressing inequity and injustice in their schools and communities. This allows, allows them to be agents of change, positive social change, and to foster a more equitable and inclusive society. And then finally, when we're thinking of building capacity, we think of building capacity of our parents and communities, which in our Equity Plan, we are, um, naming our Equity Partners. Whether a parent or a community member, an Equity Partner, we had one today, uh, who spoke, actively advocates for equity in education and the broader community. They support students' agencies and foster a sense of belonging, respect, and celebration and of diversity. Equity Partners identify and address barriers to student success, collaborating with educators to create an inclusive learning environment. Equity Partners support schools and teachers by volunteering their time, sharing knowledge and experiences, and collaborating to promote educational equity for all. And the capacity building that we'll do, uh, supported through our parent university, IPPC, and our parent groups, um, is working on advocating for educational equity, and, uh, because many people are well-intentioned when they're advocating for educational equity, but I believe that it's our responsibility to also teach community members how to partner appropriately and how to advocate appropriately. Um, building bridges to student success, and also focusing on, um, supporting student And then finally, we'll talk about the professional learning, um, that we've done and we just, we continue to enhance within our district. IPSD 204 is committed to operationalizing equity through robust professional learning, opportunities tailored to our staff's diverse needs. We believe in fostering lifelong learning as an essential tool and empowering staff with the knowledge and skills to promote equity. Our varied learning formats provide insights, guidance, and capacity building on critical equity-related topics. These opportunities not only support our strategic plan's equity goals, but bring them to life, reinforcing our commitment to equity. And so there's, uh, two ways we lay out how we learn in our district. There are times where we all learn collectively. As a district, we engage in systematic, uh, learning process to continually enhance our commitment to equity. This includes district-wide professional development sessions, dedicated school improvement days, collaborative spaces for professional learning communities, and curriculum grade-level teams working together to ensure inclusivity and promote equity. But then, as a district, we also, which I believe is just as powerful, if not more powerful, we provide various personalized learning opportunities to enhance our staff's capability in fostering educational equity. We provide a range of personalized learning opportunities that include in-house curriculum tailored to our district needs, collaborative graduate-level study opportunities, professional development hours, or continuing, continuing education units for licensure, and role-based learning. These varied opportunities ensure that all staff members have the right tools and knowledge to contribute effectively to our equity objectives. So, if we go back, um, that's the end, the rest of the presentation are those definitions, some of them that I referred to, that you can look at on your own time if you'd like. Um, but again, uh, just to go back to the alignment, um, that we have from our mission, born the strategic plan and Equity Belief Statement, then our Equity Plan, and then how we operationalize it through the school improvement plans, the equity-focused capacity building, and the professional learning. And one of the strengths, I believe, of our Equity Plan is that we're leveraging, um, systems and processes that we currently have. We're not inventing something new. We have supporting structures for our students, we have supporting structures for our community members, and we have current supporting structures for our, um, staff also. And so we leverage those to ensure that we can operationalize the equity objectives within our strategic plan. And I'll take any questions.
All right. So time for questions and comments. Um, I'll start with, uh, Mr. Rising.
Um, you know, once in a while you get a presentation that, uh, it just kinda feels right, and it feels like it just is everything that we strive for and trying to get better at, and then keep moving our district forward and improving. Um, and, to me, this is far more than just equity. Th- this is doing, first and foremost, what's best for all of our students. Um, it's in help, helping improve in our staff, it's helping us engage with our community and, and making them feel like their school system is part of the community. Um, and it's really, as you mentioned, you know, even, even has a part to do with our operations, and our, and, um, if you could go to, uh, slide, um, it was, okay, slide ch-ch-ch, twelve. Uh, next one. Oh, keep going. There we go.
Priority One?
Yeah, I, I really enjoyed this slide, uh, because I think it gets into the meat of how we can best educate our students, uh, because your priority goal one is, is focus on student development, which is academics as well as social, emotional, um, and making sure our stu- students are supported socially, emotionally, and making sure they're welcomed. But, this kinda really gets into, and I love the way you touched on all of this, because you explained it for people better. Um, a- and I highly encourage our community to look at this slide, because it's making our teachers more effective to teach all of our students in the best way that meets all of our students' individual needs. And that's what this really is about. Um, and that's what we even say, you know, in our Equity Statement, that we are committed to creating a culture where all staff, students, and families feel safe, respected, and part of the school community, but are also learning in the best environment possible. Um, and I, and I just thought this was wonderful, so I actually don't have any questions, I, I just wanted to highlight this slide, because it was probably my favorite. Um, I mean, all the ones you did subsequently after this, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, but this particular one, um, I, I really enjoyed, and, uh, thank you for all your work, Nader, I, I know this is a lot, and, and you've worked with so many people to develop this, and I'm looking forward to us putting this into practice, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. And, you know, I'm, um, I'm a special educator at heart, and, uh, Universal Design for Learning, if you're familiar with that, um, the easy way to explain it, if we go back to audiobooks, you know, it used to be the one student, um, who has dyslexia, you provide them with the audiobook, maybe you give them a cassette tape, I guess, back in the day, secretly, hey, here you go. And then Universal Design for Learning said, well, why don't we just make the cassette tape or the MP3 file available to everyone? And you take what you need when you need it. And we start to teach students that agency of getting what they need when they need and being able to speak up. And, um, I believe we can also apply that to how we look at equity, right? These strategies are strategies that raise the bar for everyone, and also start to, um, reduce our, the disparities, uh, that we see, um, in our district and, and education. So, how are, and, and because of, and we know sociopolitically, um, equity has become a term that scares people, and, uh, one of the intentions of this plan is to, to tell people, like, I, I think all of us, in our hearts, know what educational equity means, and we know that it's not something scary. And we know that it's not something scary. It's not the boogeyman. And I think this re-centers us into what we're trying to do for all of our students.
And I love the way you touched on, at the beginning, on removing barriers and you referred specifically to technology. But removing barriers, as we know, is so much more than that, right? It, it could be from physical barriers to technology to systemic racial issues. But the broader thing of removing barriers. Is meeting students where they are, helping students where they are to be better academically and socially, emotionally. And that's really what this work is about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dumbing?
Thank you so much, Nader. It's wonderful to, to have a, a second chance to, to hear you speak about. Speak about this. And what's, what's so important to me is the inclusivity of all of our stakeholders. So that's critical to me for, for us to see us focused on our students, which is where everything begins, and our staff. But, but the place where everybody else also is included. I love the, the student one that Mr. Rising just spoke about. I also really love the invest in staff. What's, you know, one of the things that is so important, especially everything that we've gone through over these last few years. We know what challenges have meant to, to our students and, and things. But to talk about the supports for our staff, because as we support our staff, obviously. They're in the best, in a better place to support our students. And just recognizing and putting that and stating that, so that, that's a reminder for all of us how important our staff is. That's critical, that was critical for me. So I really appreciate you, you having that. I think I'll probably understand more as we go forward, but I'll be interested, I'm not going to ask now. But I'll be interested as we move forward and we start to do the work within our buildings. For an update on, on what does this look like when we're speaking about, just like when we're talking about calculus A B. You know, what this looks like when we're talking about some of our different, some of our different courses and how that's incorporated. So. Great work. I think we're on a wonderful track. It's been a long, long, long time coming to see something that. All of our buildings, all of our staff, everyone, all of our stakeholders, the community that we can begin to put our teeth into, to see how we all play a part. So. Looking forward to seeing and hearing more, but, but this is great.
Thank you. And I do want to say that, you know, this, also a thanks to all of the previous equity directors who have done the work, paved the path here. And of course, the board and the previous boards who have been committed to this, because without that, and a cabinet and administration, and a community that is dedicated to equity. So, and as a preview, yes, we, we will be talking about that, how, how we weave the authentic, inclusive, and empowering. Aspects into course building, into curriculum, and then also how we look at our instructional materials. So, yeah, that'll be exciting. I would love to present that update to you.
Ms. Jentsz?
I want to obviously start off by thanking you for all of the work that you've been putting in. I think we're all very excited to see this, you know, being put into action. I, I come at it from a little different perspective where I, I agree with Ms. Dumbing and Mr. Rising. You know, with the student and staff developments, but the engagement with parents is something that. I absolutely love seeing everything that we're going to be doing and. I, I love that we're going to be working with parent groups a lot more to. As we know, there's a lot of the community that goes to them first and asks, you know, some of those parent leaders, you know. So getting them involved, so we're all kind of consistent and making sure that. What's being taught in the schools will also be done at home as you, looks like we're going to be giving so many opportunities for parents to. Go to different programs and learn all of this. It's just super exciting, honestly. So I agree with Ms. Dumbing. There may be questions that come down the road as it's all being put into action, but. Right now, it's just a lot of excitement for what's to come.
Thank you. And yeah, I love, as someone mentioned, my entanglement with parent groups is, is exciting. I appreciate it. And, you know, working with parent groups. Parents are the biggest advocates for their students, right? And if we don't engage them and if we're not transparent with what we're trying to do, you can understand why they might be upset. So I think our, our engagement, which we already have and do a wonderful job in the district, but just enhancing that is something I look forward to.
Ms. Fazdek?
Thank you for this. I really appreciate the cohesiveness of this. Plan with the equity belief statement and the strategic plan. And the very clear and orderly structure of how this will happen. Because it's one thing to say, we really want to do this, and it's another thing to see what are the tools that we can use to make it happen. I also feel really lucky to be working in a community and working with a district and administration. That thinks this is really, really important. And is willing to say, what can we do better? How can we keep learning as a community? I think it also provides excellent role modeling for our kids. We all keep learning together to make this a better place for all of us. So thank you for all of this. I did have a additional suggestion from a fellow board member here, and I, I think it's a great idea considering we have our SAB here. But if at some point we can ask students what they are missing in their schools as well, as an input piece for equity, that would be great.
Oh, for sure. And you know, one of the. We actually did seek feedback on the equity plan from one of our student groups at, at NIQA and one other student group. And definitely, I think elevating student voice and agency is a huge part of the equity plan. And we do hope to support the initiative in the SAB and work more closely with them. Thank you.
So I wrote a little note to Allison before she said that. It's interesting, as a board member. A lot of times I often defaulted to my most recent graduate and asked how she felt about certain things. And it's when we ask our student advisory board and we get a whole wonderful perspective on things. That's not us adults that think we sometimes know everything. And I encourage us, especially with this, as we work through our equity plan, to continuously engage our students as much as possible. And hear the kind of environment and the kind of schools that they want to be a part of. Because they're witnessing the divisiveness that they see in society, just like we do. And we want to make sure it's the best school for all of our students. So I think that's extremely important. So, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Carubas?
Thank you, President Donahue. Three points I want to make. Thanks for the presentation, forty pages. This is very, very thorough. One is kind of the, the lens to. Try to keep us out of trouble and in everyone's good graces. And making sure that the plan. Complies with our equal opportunity requirement. And our substantially comparable services requirement. And we have ingrained in the law and policy. Seven colon ten, that we're going to provide equal education opportunities to all of our students. That's something we have to do. That's a, that's a maximum. We have an obligation for, under the law or policy six colon one seven. That all schools shall provide services that taken as a whole are substantially comparable. And in addition to those two legal requirements, we've added our belief statement. With the, you know, the equity component. Because we recognize that. We need to do some more so that services are substantially comparable and that the opportunities are equal. I think where we get into difficulty as a society generally is when people feel that we are providing. More opportunity and differing services. So I, I think that as we move further down the equity plan. We must also take time to recognize that. We must provide equal opportunity and substantial services across the board. Otherwise, I think we will lose support and momentum in any equity implementation. Thoughts and comments on that?
I agree with you that we, and I, and I hope you see the spirit, or we, we try to see that the spirit of the plan. Is working to ensure that all students are getting equal opportunity. And also, I think, for me at least. My take on it is, is not that we're necessarily doing something wrong, but as educators, there's continuous improvement. And the, the lens of equity allows us to constantly be investigating what we're doing, peeling back layers. And realizing that what was good for a student even a, a year or two ago might not be what's right for students now. So I agree with you.
And I, I agree with you, what you said there as well. I think. Trying to just, you know, recognize that there's. There, there's additional lens that needs to be passed through there in order to make sure that it's. It's, it's fully supported going forward, you know, through this board, through this administration, through the cabinet. And then kind of to drill down and to highlight. You know, possible, I know you list a bunch of possible ways. Priorities can be implemented, but I'd like to drill down and focus on slide twelve. Which talks about equitable grading practices. And it talks about a shift towards standard-based grading practices to help ensure that the assessments are a true reflection of students' understanding and skills rather than the behavior of them. And while that sounds nice. Once you put that into more common vernacular for a parent or a student. And you take it to the end and say. I'm, we're going to get rid of the grading scale and just see if you've mastered calculus rather than the R B. Educationally, that might be the right answer. But going back to community support for things like that. I think is one of the real important reasons why going through this, you are going to have to see if there is community support for doing that. Because if not, if that tries to become a top-down item. Then, an item like that that. One small aspect of a school improvement plan that includes something like that or a change in the grading policy, they include something like that. Could become the sole focus. And so we, we got to make sure that there's support for each of these individual items that the community chooses to, you know, move. You know, move forward with this. So I like the idea of throwing all this. Out of there, but I think the reality is once you look at each of these individual ones, there is. A lot to unravel, to get to doing some of these things.
Yes, I, I.
Comments on that?
No, I, I agree. And equitable grading practices is something that some of our schools have worked organically on for years. And I think at least myself and discussions I've had with people. Is that we understand the, the dangers of any sort of top-down initiative in a large district. And especially one like this that I think we can, there's enough history now that we can see how not to. Change grading practices in a district. And it's, it's definitely not from district down telling people how to grade. But I think it's a shift in the mindset in what, what grading means. And it doesn't mean adopting just a standard-based grading necessarily, or getting rid of As, Bs, and Cs. But it could be something as simple as. Nader has bombed all of his tests this semester, but he did a really nice extra credit diorama. And he ends up passing the course. Does that, does my passing grade actually reflect any of my mastery of that subject? And so I think those are the discussions that we want to have organically within communities, with parents, with stakeholders. And definitely not force it on people, because grading is something that educators are extremely passionate about. And we respect the autonomy of our staff and our schools. And it's something that I think we can start to think, what does that mean for our district? What does it mean to move towards equitable grading practices? But not necessarily adopting a framework and pushing it top-down. I agree with you.
Great. I think that's a, that's a good discussion. My third point is. You know, focused on resources. There's a lot in here and it all sounds good. But we don't know what the dollar amount is to implement these things. Some might cost more, some might be neutral, some might be costly. So this is a, a great plan, but there's a lot unknown and that, you know, is going to need to come up in the discussion, as we say. We are a resource-challenged district and we have limitations. And we would like to do this option, but we can't. And we recognize that in some, in dealing with some of our comparable districts. When people say two oh three does this, so why can't two oh four do this? So I think as this plan progresses, I think the resource. Issues are going to become more prevalent. Specifically looking at slide thirteen. And as simple as allocating regular time for teachers to collaborate in plan. That's a constant issue that comes up in teacher negotiations and dealing with, you know, what. Time the teacher spends doing what. So if we're talking about specifically allocating separate parts of a day or additional time during the day to do certain things. Well, that comes at a greater cost. But if we're just pulling part of a regular planning schedule, we use all this, well, then it's, then it's neutral. And so you can see where that's kind of progressing as we, we work through the, the plan and that specific area. So I would be interested as this plan develops, we, we know about the resource limitations, challenges as it goes forward.
Definitely, yes. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Jane?
Thank you, Dr. Najjar, for your presentation today. When you used the word operationalized, my face lit up. It's one of my favorite words. People may think I'm odd because of that, but I really do love that word because it's finally. Making these concepts, concepts that we've been discussing for so long more tangible and concrete. And this district were, we were leaders in creating the belief statement. And now because of your work and your team's work and the district's history and commitment to this, we're going to be leaders in operationalizing it. And that excites me thoroughly. But with that comes a great deal of responsibility in trying to do our best with operationalizing this. So, thank you for that. I, I have some questions. To further operationalize your. your plan with regard to school improvement plans, which I, in theory, really, really understand. I was just curious as to whether, when a building puts together their school improvement plan, are the categories or the priorities that you outlined in slides twelve to fifteen the same type of categories or language that's implemented in built school improvement plan? Like, how does that connect? Will that be intuitive to building leaders?
It will be, and we're providing them professional learning and collaborative spaces to be able to talk about this. So, for example, if I'm writing a school improvement plan where I'm trying to raise my reading scores by a certain percentage, and then, what are the action items that I'm going to take? So, then, this gives me a menu where I can start to think of, you know, one of the things that we can do is, what if, hey, we have some special education teachers who want to push into the classroom more and would rather work on enhancing co-teaching and some of the UDL strategies? And so, they're going to focus on that for a year and see how that can... Because all these are research-based strategies that do raise scores of students and student outcomes. Or, for example, if I have a school improvement plan around reducing disciplinary infractions, I can use as one of my action items, something around the restorative practices or the strength-based approach. So, looking at students and developing curriculum and developing interventions around the strengths of students and not their deficits. So, these are all plug-and-play, I would say, under some of the larger goals in school improvement plans. In elementary, you might see typically, they'll have a goal around reading, math, and SEL. And so, all of these can fit somewhere in there. They obviously wouldn't take all of them, but some of these, for one year, you can really dig in. And this is what your professional development would look like throughout the year. It would drive the professional development, and it would drive the conversations of the teachers. So, that's where it might fit in. A school might have taken some data on belonging, student belonging. And so, they want to raise that because they know that student belonging, and the more students feel like they belong, that increases student achievement. And so, then they might take some of these, or they might look at some of the things that they can do for their staff members, right? Because if their staff members feel like they have a sense of belonging, then that can increase the student's sense of belonging. So, a lot of these are things that, with, I think, the right professional development, and I believe a lot of our administrators already see what that is, this just allows them to say, "The research-based strategies are there. I don't have to go search for them. I can write it." And when they're collaborating with somebody, I might say, "Hey, Supna, you and I, in our schools, let's work on the collaborative planning time. And let's see how we can be creative without spending extra money and what we can do to create that for our staff."
Thank you. That's... Because one thing, a common theme that often pops up in our discussion amongst board members is while we so want the customization of our education towards the students, the unique students that reside in it, there also needs, there's this tension between district-wide initiatives and practices that are shared, and then also that customization. And so, I guess another area that I was thinking about as you were presenting is, might these school improvement plans be shared? Like, are, or the outcomes of these plans, are they shared with building leaders? So, that way, we aren't recreating the wheel necessarily for similar problems, or not even problems, but just improvement plans? Is that part of this plan in some way?
That piece, not specifically, but I would say, Dr. Tally, do you want to address?
Yeah. School improvement plans, one of the great things about working on them is working on them in a collaborative nature so that you have school A, school B, school C might work together, especially in the summer. So, we gave time available for our schools to come together in the summer to work on their school improvement plans. The principals meet on a regular basis, and so therefore, they can share some of their strategies across schools. Because, to your point, it's a great opportunity to share some of the action items. The most important part of a school improvement plan are the action items that are there. And so, why reinvent the wheel all the time? Or, it's important to know what are the action items that other schools are doing.
Great. That's, so that's already happening. That's wonderful. And then my last point. One thing that I notice personally in my work with equity is you tend to get the same people gravitating towards this type of work. And what your plan is doing is naturally embedding this work in all of our work, right? So, like you mentioned, it's not something separate necessarily. It's embedded. Do you foresee or envision methods of formative feedback for our staff, educator, administrators, as they're implementing and experimenting with this so that we learn to grow as we're improving in equitable practices?
Yeah, for sure. I think through some of the structures that we have, through our building equity leadership teams, through our district equity leadership team, that allows us that feedback loop. Also, we're looking next year to provide, as an option for schools, student surveys. And we've been doing, surveying our staff and how they feel around equity and topics around equity, and then also our community. So, I believe that those are all opportunities for us to be able to get that feedback and give them what they need. And that's one of the reasons why, in that capacity building, you noticed it didn't say year one, year two, year three, because I don't want to set us up for something that maybe we're not ready to do or can't do. But instead, we can say, "Around this theme, what do we need this year?" And, for example, around that theme of what we teach, we have made some missteps in the kind of things that we've put in front of students or the lessons that we thought were authentic and inclusive, but maybe they weren't and they were harmful. So, that's a professional learning that all of our staff is going to be doing. And back to your point where you were saying, you find the same people over and over again, right? So, this was one of the ideas around that capacity building, is to raise that baseline, right? We know that everyone in our district gets the implicit bias training and some of that basic equity training at first, but then, but then what? But then, our same equity champions show up to the same things over and over again, what about the other 2,000 educators? And so, this way, we can ensure that we're still allowing people to grow as fast as they want to grow and honoring them for what they know and what they care about and what they're passionate about. But then, we're also expecting a baseline movement for our students, our staff, and our community.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for the presentation. I had the honor of hearing it before individually with you. So, I know this was a really large project for us to complete. We did our equity statement several years ago. It took the board a long time to put those exact words together, like, maybe even close to a year that we worked on that. So, it's good. And I loved your story about the library cards and how pulling out just a few of those choice words that we had were impactful to our schools. But this is a very comprehensive plan. We went from equity statement to our strategic plan, which was a huge project for our district. And now, we have this equity addendum to that. I agree with Ms. Jane. One of the things I loved was how integrated everything was. It's not a standalone document. It's not a sit-on-your-shelf. It's actionable. And it was meant to provide support and help to all of our community, our teachers, our staff, our parents, our students. And for me, that was incredibly important and impactful when I saw this. The slides twelve through fifteen were the ones that I loved because I pictured in the past, these school improvement plans were kind of like something I would do at work. You have to write your strategic plan every year at work, right? And so, you write it, you get it, you present it, you get everybody to comment on it, and then it goes somewhere, and it sits there. And our strategic plan is live. It's driving all of our actions and our behaviors. And now, this is incorporating it, but also pulling in equity into all of that entire plan. But on those school improvement plans, teachers or principals are asked, once a year, "Put together your school improvement plan." And by the way, you should think about equity, right? And so, they're at, you know, their own wits to figure out, "What should I put in there?" Like, and each school is unique. Each school has different needs. And this, if you open, look on slide twelve, it gives you some very good ideas of proven things you could think about in putting into your school improvement plan, dependent on what your school needs, right? And I also brought up, when I saw this, the grading practices, because I'm like, "What is, what could that be?" And I've read a lot of articles about things, but it was, it was a very helpful discussion for me because it can take lots and lots of different paths. And I think you asked me a question like, "Well, if somebody didn't turn in any of their homework and then they got all As on the test, what are you grading?" You know, their understanding and mastery of the topic? Or the fact that they always did their homework and they had a family situation that helped them get their homework done? So, it's like, there's a lot of things to consider in that one item that's not just throwing away grades or doing something along those lines. There's a lot of different things that could be meaningful in that area. And in fact, our board, what, last year, got a position statement passed at the Illinois State Board level for all of our school boards in Illinois. What, how many are there these days? Mark eight hundred and...
Fifty-four, fifty-two.
Eight hundred and fifty-four. And that position statement that we got passed, which we don't really implement in our own district, and again, passing means it's something that the Illinois School Board of Association agrees with in theory. And it was to do away with zeros on grading. Like, that no one should get a zero if they don't turn it... The idea was, if you get a zero and you have, you know, the next test, you get 100%, you're still at 50%. You're still fail, right? You have to do many more tests to make up for that one bad thing you had. So, you know, our board is sensitive to that whole grading thing and agrees that there's a lot that could be looked at there. And it could mean a lot of different things. And I don't think any of these were meant to tell principals, "Well, if you want to do this, look for extra money" or whatever. It's like, you have a budget for your school. You're writing an improvement plan to make your school better. And here are some helpful things that you could consider to use to make your plan more helpful to achieving your goals that you want to achieve. And for me, providing those tools is extremely helpful if I was a principal, rather than sitting on my own saying, "How am I going to incorporate whatever equity in my plan?" kind of thing. So, I just thought it was wonderful that it was integrated, that it was comprehensive, and it's very actionable. So, I appreciate it, and I'm thrilled that this is done, and you probably are too.
I am, but it was definitely a collaborative effort from every conversation that I had with, from parents to school administrators to students, and really understanding what our district needs, right? I might have done some research and maybe presented a dissertation on equity plans. And there is, you know, there might be the standard equity plan, but I really believe that this took into consideration, at least the best we could, what we've done historically, what we currently have in place, and how we could actually operationalize equity in a way that is meaningful. And I think one of the things I told Dr. Tally and some other people, I said, "If this is, if my job is to write an equity plan that just looks pretty on a website, I might be looking for another position because I couldn't live with myself because I think that equity is something that is real, is done." But sometimes, it is nebulous, and people don't understand, "What does it actually mean?" And I think we go back to honoring what our educators came to do in our district, and then also supporting our principals. I think that's something extremely important. I'm not here to tell our principals what to do, but we're here to support them in equity and ensure that they have all of the tools to be able to do what they need.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Any comments or... There is a large unit district meeting, I think, in a week or so. I'm not sure what topics they're going to cover this time, but always interesting. So, there'll be a number of new presidents for some of the large districts in the state, so... All right. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.